We now start the third meeting of the evening. This is a meeting of the Urbana City Council. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmember Zamanz Brown.
Here.
Pazin Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts. Wu. Mayor Marlin.
Here. We have approval of minutes of previous meetings, the May 7th joint meeting, the May 21st meeting, and the May 29th special meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll motion to approve that.
Moved by Dean.
I'll second them.
Seconded by Dennis. Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion is passed. Are there any additions to the agenda? Good. No additions to the agenda. Next up is public input. We have a number of cards submitted on the brick sidewalk topic. Let's see. Okay. Most of the commenters wish to speak now, and a couple of people want to speak at the time of the agenda. If you change your mind and want to speak now, you'll be able to do that. First up is Alice Engelbretson. You have up to five minutes. Hello.
Yeah, I probably won't take five minutes, but I'll kick it off. My name is Alice Engelbretson. I live at 501 East California in Urbana. That's on the corner of California and Maple. And I have for many years, at least 20 years plus, been advocating for brick sidewalks. However, I will admit that I have stumbled on some really horrible spots of brick sidewalks, to the point where I almost knocked my front teeth out. So I did call the city and the Public Works, and they really did their best to get a grant to fix a few sections of the brick sidewalks. But I just find that the safety of the brick and the concrete are really becoming a major problem for safe pedestrian traffic in East Urbana, and probably West Urbana, too. I just live in East Urbana. So I just wanted to emphasize that we really love our brick sidewalks in terms of the history and the aesthetics of them, but just like concrete sidewalks, they do need regular maintenance. And I know the city is strapped for money, and this is probably, you know, one of the things that's hard to fund, but I just want you to know that we really value safe sidewalks. So that's my spiel.
Thank you. Nancy Westcutt.
Hi, I'm Nancy Westcutt. I also live in historic East Urbana. A week or two ago, I was fully prepared to come and say that I really thought that the brick sidewalks were unsafe, until I realized that, well, in the last year, I've had many vision problems, so I am now a low-vision person. And I realized that over the last year, the three times that I've tripped in our neighborhood have all been on concrete sidewalks, and it's all been, you know, concrete cracks where the square came up, where the concrete square came up, maybe by a third of an inch. So I would say that at least at a minimum, the brick is probably no more unsafe than the concrete sidewalks. And I do like the concrete sidewalks, and in fact, I have, in walking around the neighborhood, I do walk the neighborhood quite a bit. They may be a little bit more unregular, but they're not, I run many more times into the cracks on the cement than I do on the brick. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. Scotty Dossett.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to our fair city, Ms. Mitten. Hope you have a productive and a joyful time here. I certainly have found it pretty easy to live in Urbana. I migrated from Champaign about 25-plus years ago and stayed, so, okay. From the beginning. Okay, so Brick Sidewalks in Huna, the Historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association, the area right to the east of us, is one of five or six represented by neighborhood associations in Urbana. We've got Wuna and Suna, and they're kind of all over. And this is a nice sunset picture here of a brick sidewalk in Urbana that I think has some interesting attributes. One, you can tell that at least one or two neighbors have actually somehow cleaned or treated the sidewalks, so that as the brick goes off into the horizon, if you can follow my arrow there, and then you hit the part, like many of our brick sidewalks in Huna, that are basically travel-maintained. That is the walking path, which has managed all by itself over these years. If we could just get these doggone walkers, or maybe the bicyclists, Charlie, you can work on that, to kind of spread out and run over the entire width of the brick sidewalk, then some of these maintenance, at least of vegetation issues, would go away. So we're here tonight, let's see, page down won't work. There we go. How did we get here? We talked about this in the Meeting of the Whole last week. The city wants to replace, or have Illinois American Water replace, a sidewalk in the 300 block of East Anderson, which actually completes four corners of a complete brick block with concrete. And so I started looking at the documentation that was provided to this group, and in the letter to the homeowners from the city, I found this paragraph. Typically, a homeowner would choose to replace the brick sidewalks with a concrete sidewalk to reduce maintenance and improve travel for elderly or disabled citizens. Full stop, untrue statement. You can't justify it by any kind of research that I've been able to find, and I've done a lot of work on brick sidewalks. So it's, what the city is presenting to the homeowner as they're trying to get this variance is simply a matter of opinion. In addition to that, in the 424 note to cancel, it noted that all of the property owners have requested to Public Works staff that brick sidewalks should be replaced with new concrete sidewalk. And I think the fact is more that the city actually approached and convinced the people that the brick should be replaced. That the city approached and convinced the homeowners that the brick should be replaced. Noted in the report from that 524 memo, property owners are concerned about tripping hazards associated with existing brick sidewalk that have resulted in falls. You can read that. None of the owner responses noted this. In fact, the owner response form that was provided didn't have any comment section. It was a simple checkmark. And then further, they noted that they're concerned about the maintenance of the sidewalks since the existing sidewalk is completely overgrown with vegetation and in poor condition. So the accented parts are mine. Benign neglect is a setup for removal. So.
Scotty, you have one minute.
Oh, only one minute, wow. So how did we get here? Decades of deferred maintenance, lack of knowledge regarding the historic significance of the walks, and lack of early involvement by neighbors who value the brick sidewalks. These are pictures that were in your packet. My first question is, who approached who about the replacement of these walks? The city to residents, or the residents to the city? And I think I know the answer to that question. Do requests contain loaded language meant to dissuade the people from valuing the brick? In my opinion, the demolition of a brick sidewalk should be subject to notification issued, just like a building demolition? And the big question is, is the city's intent to use utility repair work to justify the removal of the brick sidewalks? That's a hard question, but I'll just go ahead and ask it, and end with this picture. So if you have any questions? Do I have any time left, Charlie? No, right at five. Okay. Thank you so much for all you do, folks.
Thank you. Ted Livinggood.
I'll get it off there.
You get it off there? Okay, sorry. Okay, forget I said anything. Well, don't forget I said anything. Forget I cried.
Good evening. My name is Ted Livinggood. I appreciate the time and effort that all of you put in to the city of Urbana. My wife, Sue, and I live in Urbana on Mumford. My wife and I own the house at 607 East Green. That's at the corner of Green and Anderson. It's a little old frame house, and I do mean old. Just as a, just as a background in history, I know about brick sidewalks. I carried mail in Urbana for 30 years. They're terrible in the wintertime. Just an opinion. But that house fronts Anderson Street. When we found out that new water mains were coming in, we were thrilled. When we found out that we had a chance to get concrete sidewalks, we were ecstatic. Our family has owned that house since the 1870s. We have seven generations that have lived in that house. My grandson and his fiancee live in that house. My wife and I lived there. My mom and dad decided that house should be used for kids, grandkids, et cetera, that want to go to the U of I that need housing. And that's the way it is. That's what dad and mom decided. So that's what we're doing right now. I have personal experience with disabled people and brick sidewalks. My wife has been disabled since 2008. She uses a cane sometimes, a walker sometimes, a transport chair sometimes, depending on her condition at the time. Brick sidewalks are horrible, just horrible, to maintain. It takes chemicals. It takes lots of chemicals. It takes lots of manpower. It takes lots and lots of time, and you're still going to end up with uneven surfaces. Transport chairs and brick sidewalks don't mix. Walkers and canes on brick sidewalks, I can tell you personally, they're bad news. My wife generally stays in the car when we go to our house to visit our grandson and his fiancee, because the sidewalks are treacherous. In addition, as I have done yard work there, and as my grandson will agree with, I have seen people in power chairs going up and down Anderson Street, in the middle of Anderson Street, because their power chairs cannot handle brick sidewalks. At the corner of Green and Anderson, there's an ADA cut in the sidewalk, which has a sloped, a sloped access, concrete access, to allow people to get off the bus, or people that need wheelchairs, to get up and down the sidewalk. But once they get up that sidewalk, there's no place to go. If this were a concrete sidewalk, they would have a place to go. So I'm here to advocate concrete sidewalks for that block. Our property is 120 feet long on that block. The block is 240 feet. So if you have questions, I've got less than a minute to go. I'll be glad to answer if you want to come up with anything. I'm watching the clock, too, Charlie.
Dennis.
Yeah. Thanks for sharing your thoughts, Ted. If the brick were relayed by the Illinois American Water to be completely level on a proper sand base.
Right.
So that there was no obvious place where tripping might occur.
Right.
Would that interest you?
No. I'm in this for the long haul. That sidewalk is going to be in the same condition it was in before American and Illinois Water started in two to five years. It's going to be just impassable for anybody with any kind of a handicap. It's just the nature of brick sidewalks.
Can you tell me any specific maintenance that you personally placed into your sidewalk?
Roundup, garden hoe, spades, to remove that. There's an edger that you can use, that you usually use around the edge of a sidewalk. I used it on that. I've been, I've worked on these sidewalks. You're looking at roundup, the more, the better, and the sooner, the better. And you probably don't like the idea of pouring chemicals into the, into the, into the ground. I don't either. But if you want to try to keep the sidewalks up, you've got to stay with it, and you've got to start early.
Are you aware of any attempt by the city to relay brick or level the brick along the side of your house?
The city, I have found, now here's what I've found with the city and Public Works. Public Works is great. They really are. And I really think Public Works would come out and fix the whole thing if I were to call them, if they could. But honestly, there are better places to put money than to come out and relay bricks. As my dad of 95 said this morning, why are they wasting their time on this?
But if, but you're aware that the city actually wouldn't be paying any money to...
Sorry?
But you're aware that the city would not be incurring any financial burden for that sidewalk to replace? It really would be the responsibility of Illinois American Water who's doing the work on utilities.
So you're going to ask Illinois American Water to maintain those sidewalks?
To relay them.
To relay them. Are you going to ask the city to maintain, are you going to ask Illinois American Water to maintain them?
No, it'd become the city's responsibility.
Right. Right, I'm aware of that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Next up is Chris Store. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but he wants to be on record as sidewalks are "an historic part of historic East Urbana, which has received awards for historic preservation. Construction deteriorates without maintenance, and brick sidewalks are no exception." Concerns about brick sidewalks or other sidewalks include concrete sidewalks undergo deterioration, individual slab shift. Property owners can be instructed on ways to help maintain the brick sidewalks. Snow removal remains a problem in all parts of town. Preserving our heritage sidewalks can also be done sensibly when they are undermined or removed for excavation. Flowable fill, which can be removed with a shovel, can help in ensuring that replaced bricks will not settle with consolidation of the soil material. So he is on record as supporting keeping the brick sidewalks in question. And we'll enter this into the record in entirety. Next up is Stephen Burian.
Good evening. I'm Steve Burian, and I'm the homeowner at 501 East Green here in the historic neighborhood. And I would like to just register that I would prefer to keep brick in the neighborhood. And my interest is mostly, you know, aesthetic. I like that I bought a house in historic neighborhood. I walk the neighborhood twice a day with my dog, and all over the neighborhood, and I think it's one of the things that makes this a desirable place to live. The homeowner down in the street at the corner of Green and Anderson, I think he makes some very interesting, very good points, and I want to respect the things that he says about wanting to make sure the quality is there for passage. On my sidewalk, I had a low patch. I didn't know that it was the city's responsibility, so I went out there with a bag of sand and a rubber mallet, and about 30 minutes later, it was fine. You know, I don't know what the research really says about which way is more cost-effective, but I wonder if they're close enough. You know, concrete sidewalks will also go out of whack, and panels will raise by half an inch, and some communities will go in and grind them down. And I wonder what the research really says about whether that's more cost-effective than brick. You think about all the plazas that are laid in brick, like in front of Alice Campbell Hall, the Alumni Center. That's been there for a good 10 years, and I don't think I've seen any maintenance there. I think well-laid brick probably is a good thing, too. So I guess I would sum up my thoughts by saying that I do value them, among other things, in our historic neighborhood, and I think a long-term decision, a long-term commitment to them. I understand if you want to make it based on cost-effectiveness, but if the costs are within reach, then I think the aesthetic would be worth it for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Two other people wanted to speak on this topic. Tracy, did you want to speak now or at the time?
At the time.
At the time? And Lance Graves, at the time or now?
Was the plan on speaking today?
Oh, I'm sorry. You want to go on record as the utility should replace the sidewalk with the materials that were previously there? Okay, we have several people who wish to speak on speeds on Lincoln Avenue. Cynthia Hoyle.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I live at 2207 South Cottage Grove in Urbana, and I am a transportation planner, and many of you know me, the work that I do in the community on behalf of walking, biking, and transit modes and safety issues related to that. I wanted to speak to you, and I provided you with a handout. The first page talks about why speed matters, and I wanted to say that this roadway was a serious issue when I came here in terms of pedestrian safety. Previous city councils, some of the members who are here tonight, looked at that roadway and did a road diet. That was the first step towards improving safety along the stretch of roadway to reduce fatalities and serious injuries. It was a courageous move on their part. There was a lot of public opposition. And we did, it did improve safety, but we still have an issue there. We need to do more to improve safety. As a result of that, staff has done a study on Lincoln. They have a series of recommendations that they are making to improve pedestrian safety further. And the first piece of that to come before you is the speed limit reduction. There are additional items that they are planning to implement. And with those changes in the design, we can lower the speed and have the safety improvements that we need along this part of the roadway. On the handout that I gave you, there's quite a bit of information on speed and pedestrian safety, and I wanted to add to that, that AAA has done a study called Impact Speeds and Pedestrian Risk of Severe Injury and Death. And they looked at all of the data and found that at 23 miles per hour, there's a 25% risk. At 31 miles an hour, it's a 50% risk, and at 39 miles per hour, it's a 75% risk. So you can see, it really increases quite significantly from 20 to 30 miles per hour. And there's some graphics in here. You'll see on the second page, there's one graphic, and it talks about the various ways in which we can reduce speeds on roadways to improve safety. As you know, in some of our adopted plans, we have said that we want to move forward in implementing Vision Zero, and that's something that the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission, on which I serve, continues to work on. The last page, front and back, talks a little bit about Vision Zero, and this data is from there. And you'll see on the back page, it shows that we've continued to have a significant increase in pedestrian fatalities, while other traffic deaths had decreased, at least up until 2016. We know since 2016, all roadway fatalities have been increasing significantly. We are now back up to 40,000 people a year dying on our roadways. And one of the other things I wanted to add to this is, this is not just about improving safety for pedestrians and bicyclists and transit users, but also for motorists. We know from the data that when you reduce speeds, we reduce the severe injury and death rates of motorists as well, and they are the ones who most commonly are being killed on our roadways. So this is an improvement that makes safety, improves safety for everybody. And I know from crossing Lincoln Avenue that a lot of motorists in this community are unaware of the fact that they are supposed to be stopping for pedestrians and crosswalks. On Green Street, we have the signs that tell them that, and so they stop. On Lincoln, we do not. So you may be halfway out into the street, which has happened to me, and the motorists honk and yell at you to get off the road. They are under the impression that you were supposed to wait until there are no cars in sight to cross the road, which is not the case. So we need to do something to improve their understanding of that, additional signage and lighting, some of the other structural changes to the street the staff are recommending. And so I would encourage you to take this first step, which is the speed limit toward the improvements that we need to make to improve safety along the roadway. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Cynthia. Annie Adams.
Hello. Similar crowd as last time. And I have a similar letter, but I just thought I would share it again, because this is very important to me. I'm here to support the staff recommendations for pedestrian safety on Lincoln Avenue, in particular, the quarter-mile of Lincoln Avenue from the stoplight at Cafe Paradiso on Nevada to the stoplight at the Illini Grove Park at Pennsylvania Avenue. This section of Lincoln Avenue connects Urbana's Arts and Culture District with over 30 businesses, museums, and performance spaces. It is a gateway to the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, which serves over 55,000 students, faculty, and staff. Urbana's residents live on both sides of Lincoln Avenue in this densely populated residential area. They live in university housing, sororities, fraternities, rental homes, apartments, and private homes. Lincoln Avenue should be an asset for all members of our community, whether they drive, walk, bike, or take a bus, not a barrier. The current configuration of this street has led to numerous collisions, which decreases equity for all road users. Cars are speeding and unable to stop safely to allow for road crossing in a safe, low-stress manner. Increasing safety for people on foot and bicycle crossing Lincoln Avenue by lowering the speed limit and adding flashing enhanced pedestrian warning signs at each end of Lincoln Avenue will save lives, decrease motorized vehicle collisions, save wear and tear on the street, save EMT, fire, police, and other city resources associated with motorized vehicle traffic collisions, increase property values, create a safer, less stressful, and more safe crossing at Lincoln Avenue by those walking, biking, and using MTD buses. Thank you for supporting the measures needed to create a safer walking, biking, and transit experience for the residents of our city.
Thank you. Nicholas Mann, you had indicated you wanted to go up the time of the agenda. Do you still wish to do that? Okay. This is on the Lincoln Avenue speed limit. Go ahead.
My name is Nicholas Mann. I'm a lifelong Urbana resident, and a cyclist, and a driver, and I'm here in opposition to lowering the speed limit. There are several reasons I'm opposed to this. The first one is that it is already the law that cars must stop for pedestrians and crosswalks, and it's already the law that the speed limit is 30 miles an hour, as well as it being the law that you can't be on your cellphone while you are driving. And, I mean, reading the Traffic Commission reports, it sounds like many of the... And, I mean, reading the Traffic Commission reports, it sounds like many of the crashes are already caused by people driving distracted, or speeding, or just not yielding to pedestrians. And I'm wondering why we can't enforce the current laws before we write new ones and make them harsher. I'm also worried that this change will only annoy the drivers who are already driving safely, whereas the drivers who were not driving safely, it won't make a difference. And as a cyclist, as well as a driver, but more as a cyclist, I'm much more worried about a driver driving the speed limit but on their phone than somebody who's driving 30 miles an hour and paying attention. I feel like this measure is partially protecting people who are crossing the street recklessly or otherwise aren't aware how to cross the street. I think that adding lighted signs, like the Traffic Commission proposes, is a great idea. Also, pedestrian bumpouts is a great idea. They'll make it safer and much clearer to cars that they have to stop there, make it much clearer to pedestrians where it's safe to cross. Those seem like great ideas. Just dropping it to 25 does not seem like a great idea. And then also, I think it's a bad idea because it's easier to be a cyclist in general if you have a car as a backup option. And it's already very slow to drive between North and South Urbana. There are no good corridors. Dropping the speed limit and making it so you have to drive slower through there, even when there are no pedestrians around, just makes it even slightly slower to drive anywhere. And if people can't drive places promptly, they might think they can, I mean, they might not want to live in Urbana. They might not think that, yeah, they, it's easier to be a cyclist if you have a good backup option, and not being able to drive anywhere quickly makes it hard for cars, to have a car as a backup option. And yes, I think there are real things the city can do, like putting in pedestrian crossing lights, doing bumpouts. Those would be great ideas. I hope you will support that and the grant that the Traffic Commission wants. I think that this, as a standalone measure, will just annoy drivers who are already obeying the law. It sends a message that the current laws about self, not being on a cellphone and yielding pedestrians, aren't being enforced anyway. And so please have those enforced. Please make positive changes. Please don't do this. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a card from Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood. She doesn't wish to address members, but she is continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. I have a card from Eldress Melinda Carr. Good evening.
I just wanted to, Eldress Melinda Carr, resident of the Dr. Ellis subdivision.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Can you hear me?
Just be a little bit closer.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Eldress Melinda Carr, resident of the Dr. Ellis subdivision. I'm sure you all know that. I wanted to speak on last week's presentation on the sanitary sewer map, just a few comments related to that. And the information that was presented, the sewer map, sanitary sewer map, was presented at the Tuesday, May 29 meeting, and was presented as a result of comments that I made at the February 26, 2018 City Council meeting regarding the Dr. Ellis subdivision, lack of response from city officials to residents in trying to get information about the breakdown in number of the locations of sewer connections across the city of Urbana. And the map that was presented did not give us sufficient information. We couldn't, we were looking at it today. I was looking at it with Pastor Underwood, Bishop Underwood, and Reverend Dr. Underwood. We could not, it was not labeled so that we could find Dr. Ellis area to know what the color, the color coding information, for example, the green, blue, orange, and yellow on the map. It said one, one area is under street pavement, 32%, and the parkway of our front yard was 36%, and the back or side yard was 30%, and then the other was 2%. But it's not labeled, like according to streets or areas, so we don't know how to determine what our area locations are. So we need that to be clarified by Public Works and Engineering Divisions, and then for other people in the public who might want this information. Since it can't be provided on the internet, we need this information to be clarified for us, to be able to know how to determine where we are and what is being said about our, our area. It sounded like it was saying that percentages made the neighborhoods equal because it was equally located in the different areas, but we can't determine where our area is. So that, that's what I'm trying to say here, is that we don't know from what that map is saying where Dr. Ellis is. It's not labeled in a manner for us to tell that.
Okay. We can help you interpret the map.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last public input card is from Natalie Wickman.
Hi. I'm the News Gazette reporter who covers the cities and city government here in Urbana-Champaign. I just wanted to respond to the woman who said that one of the News Gazette articles said that the proposed budget would be cutting hours and, and...
For the library.
Yeah, for the library. I, I just checked my articles about that, and neither of them say that hours will be cut. So I don't know if a different member of our staff accidentally said that.
It was actually one of the articles I read on...
I, I just checked both. I just checked both of them online and couldn't find that.
Okay.
Maybe it was in a different local news outlet. I just wanted to...
It was the News Gazette.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure what happened. Sorry about that.
And I'm sorry, for maybe it was reading.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. That completes the public input at this time. Unfinished business, we'll move on, is, first up is ordinance number 2018-05-036, an ordinance approving a special use permit for 1007 West University Avenue, Green Street Realty, Plan Case 2343-SU-18. And this was held over from the May 21 council meeting.
As the staff, as the staff gave the presentation at the last council meeting, I wanted the applicants here to answer the main question, which I think was about the location of the building. And also in the packet, there was a request for a landscape plan that's been provided.
And could you introduce yourselves, please?
Jacob Unzicker with Mode 3 Architecture.
Josh Daley with Mode 3 Architecture.
All right. So as Lori mentioned, there were a couple of questions, I believe, at the last meeting. So we've tried to provide some clarification by adding some material, one being the addition of location and types of plantings for screening for the parking. That's been added to the ground floor plan that you see on the screen. The other thing that we have added, scroll down. Keep going. Keep going. One more. Yeah, it's kind of hard to see, I guess, from far out, but we also know there was some question from Plan Commission in terms of how there, there might be a way to screen vehicle parking that was located underneath the building. Because of the parking requirements, there is quite a bit of parking on the site, and the only way that we could really fit all of it on there was to actually have some of it under the building. But then that also has the side effect of making the building look like it's floating on stilts. And I understand, you know, for some people, that, that might be not very attractive. So one thing that we've done on these images is to maybe provide a suggestion of how we possibly can provide some screening of that parking by adding sort of a transparent element that kind of mimics the storefront glass around the rest of the ground floor. So it's a lot of the same material, but then, I guess, one other thing that was added was a suggestion of, like, possibly where signage would go on the building, which would be along the front and that banding that you can see. And I believe it would be some kind of an internally illuminated signage. But in general, these images or the model that's been created here is just to indicate the size and shape of the building, and it does not really include our selections for color or material. So at this point, we know that it would, it would, we will produce a nice-looking building, but we wanted to provide some information about kind of the size and where windows would go, entrance locations, that kind of thing. But I know there was some interest in what materials would be used for the building. For that, I can tell you that our intent is to use something probably of a metal panel, combination of that with the glass. We also possibly might use some EIFS stucco material, and then some, I think, some brick in some accent locations. And then in terms of color, this is very monochromatic. The intent we would have there is to have kind of a neutral base palette, but then provide some accent in color in, in some areas. So I guess the other thing that we needed to address was the placement of the building on the site. I think you were gonna...
Yeah, so this, a question came up on why is the building located where it is? And one major facet of this project is we have to make it not only attractable, attracted for apartment dwellers above, which we're asking for here, but we have to make it attractive for retailers as well. This is a very highly-traveled commercial corridor, and you have a mix of everything from buildings. I mean, next door is the Taco Bell. Down the street is the Dairy Queen. Going west, you have Dirks Cycle, you have The Walk, you have a new Burger King, brand-new Burger King. If you look at all those locations, parking is very obvious when you come in off the street where to park. So one of the reasons for pulling the building back was to make it very obvious when you come in off the street, you can park in front of where you're going to go and go on the front door. And that's very attractive to retailers. It doesn't matter really who goes in there. Nero's Giro's is the current tenant on the site, and the idea was to have them go back in there as a potential tenant. Predominantly, their, their traffic is drive-up or walk-up traffic. So, so that was the idea behind why the building is located where it is, is to make it attractive for their customers. The front of the building also being set back the way we've got it in front of the parking, we can still get some seating in front of the building there, right by the door, and not be right on the street with all the traffic. So that's kind of why the building is placed where it is. It also lends itself good for a future potential drive-through. So that was, that's, I think that was the one...
Are there, are there any questions? Are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any questions? Dennis?
Okay. Thanks so much for coming to explain in a little bit more detail and with some better visuals your plan. I was one of the people who was kind of concerned about the fact that this is a modern residential building for the most part, but rather than having kind of like a, a street conscious urban facade, it was kicked back, and there was basically a large parking lot in front of it. That concerned me because usually in modern urban design, we try to put the parking at the rear. We don't emphasize the parking. We try to kind of seclude it, make it the most obvious thing. The other question I had was the kind of gaping mouth into the, the parking, the stairwell. I see, though, that there are only about one, two, three, four, five, six parking spots within the, or under the building on the ground level, right? So most of your parking is actually in the lot. The buffered landscaping helps me feel that there's a way that, that there can be a vegetative and a softer barrier between the street itself and the building without obscuring the building. And I also appreciate your perhaps rethinking the screening of the large entry into the under-building parking area so that it matches in style the appearance of the window patterning above, rather than being just a solid mass or with a, with a big truck entrance, is what I would call it. These are not great features for urban living. Better to have those kind of giant entrances off an alley. But by screening them adroitly, I think you can really improve the look of your building. So I just really wanted to come and talk to you about some of those concerns because you're talking now about materials, and you're talking about details in design, which I think could really make your project so much more handsome and appealing. So thank you for coming and speaking to us.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Dean. Any further discussion?
Should I...
Oh, you want to read the motion?
Yes.
Please.
I'm going to make the motion for the replacement of the existing brick sidewalk on Anderson Street between East Height... Oh, I'm sorry. Totally reading the wrong thing. For ordinance number 2018-05-036, an ordinance approving the special use permit we just discussed for 1007 West University Avenue for Green Street Realty, Plan Case 2343-SU-18, came over from the previous City Council for approval.
And I will second that.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Dean. Will the clerk please call the rule? Oh, sorry. Bill.
Yeah, I appreciate you're coming, and I understand Dennis's concerns. I think when I watched the Plan Commission meeting, they emphasized that the design was driven by the requirement for parking. So I think part of it also, and correct me if you, if I'm wrong, is that in the, with the, the front parking there, you're actually able to go into the setback by about 10 feet or something. So you're able to, for, so half of those parking spaces along the front, those eight spaces are actually in the setback. And if you put the building up there, you wouldn't be able to use that space at all. So that would probably, since you're already using the setback in the back along the alley, you'd have to lose parking. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So in order to get that much parking, you really can't have building in that front setback, it seems like. But that said, I don't think, I'm not terribly concerned about two rows of parking in the front in even an urban, even if this was a downtown area where you had storefronts and everything, a little bit of parking here and there actually provides some space for sidewalk sales, tents, movies. We've used the lot at UC Bank for movies. So there, it's functional space. And whether you're walking or riding a bike along, and I think this is, since this is University Avenue, I think that front walk is actually going to be a wider multi-use path in the redesign of university. I'm seeing a nod, yes. So that will be a biking, walking path, and having those too close to doors opening and things like that, as we've seen in other areas, can be pretty disastrous. So I, I think it's a good design, and I just wanted to say thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Any further comments? We have a motion, a second. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up, we have three presentations related to aspects of our budget. The first is library presentation, Director Celeste Show.
I'm sorry. Can you get it right?
Thank you very much for your time tonight, and thanks once again for all the excellent work of our colleagues here at the city. We not, we could not be as successful as we are at the library without, without all the wonderful help of people throughout the entire city, from legal and police and fire... the wonderful help of people throughout the entire city, from legal and police and fire, HR, Public Works, I'm missing Elizabeth, and finance. We gain so much from your expertise, and we are grateful every day. So thank you very much. The Urbana Free Library is really busy, and you know that. I'll just say 275,000 people have visited so far this year, checking out over 600,000 items. The budget in your budget book is what's already been approved by the library board at their May budget meeting, which included that 55,400 decrease. So the budget in the budget book has already been approved by the library board, and that included no cuts to our staffing or collections. We run a really lean organization, and I'm very proud of the work that we do. It's, it's really lean, but no cuts to those areas, and we're very proud of the ability to be able to do that this time around. Our total revenue is less than the total expenses for a couple of very good reasons. We have been saving our money wisely so that we can make some projects move ahead. A couple of those projects are, we're finally gonna be hiring a development professional this year. The city pledged $30,000 a couple of years ago. The foundation pledged the same amount, so we'll be hiring that person to start early next fiscal year. We are setting aside money in a new special reserve fund, which I'll talk about in a moment. We are budgeting as if we would be spending the full amount in case there's some type of capital expense need. We are hoping to not have to spend that money, but it is a possibility. And we've set aside over $100,000, just about that, for a way that we do our payroll. We pay every two weeks. And so that means that every 11 years, there are 27 pay periods, not 26 pay periods. We are moving ahead to make that 27th pay period happen next year, and so we'll be paying out an additional about $90,000 in payroll. And that will get us on target to pay 365 days a year, every year, and that saves us money in the long run. The Ray Street Library, the Samuel T. Bucy Library that opened 100 years ago this July, is, well, 100 years old and has issues that come along with having historic buildings. So as you know, the porch still needs repair. We're working with a company to get that moving ahead. And we have HVAC and other expensive needs that have been documented in the library's five-year financial plan, and we've been working through them. Grateful to the city for $125,000, which we spent this year to replace one of our boilers. And given a pledge from the foundation, we'll be replacing a chiller and a condenser this year as well. But when you have an old building, 2018, and then 1975 and 2005, there are many capital expenses that need to happen, and we're trying to catch up with some of those. So the foundation has pledged over $300,000 this year. That includes $88,000 for the porch, $10,000 for a compressor, $154,000 for the chiller, and other things in smaller amounts, but also important in a number of ways. The Friends of the Urbana Free Library are pledging over $30,000 so that we can upgrade the furniture in our front reading rooms, which are over 10 years old and are showing their wear. So we are looking forward to new furniture with the Friends' money, and perhaps new computer chairs in the auditorium, or computer chairs, and auditorium chairs, depending on what we are able to get for the funds. We may not spend it all, but we have the ability with their pledge for money that has been saved over the years. So the Friends' money is part of what would come out of fund balance, because we've already been given that money and have been saving it. The $300,000 from the foundation is additional income coming in from them this year, and they've been fundraising very hard for us for a period of years. As you know, last year, they purchased the corner lot for the library, and they've been very diligent and very responsible. The state allows a mechanism for libraries to save money in what they call a special reserve fund. We have been saving money the past years that I've been here to put aside for capital expenses and IT expenses for the future. So we have just about $54,000 set aside. The special reserve fund allows the library board to have taxes and other funds that haven't been spent during the year taken and put aside into this reserve fund for future capital and equipment expenses. And so again, we will budget to spend that in case there's some type of capital expense emergency, but won't spend it unless necessary, and with, of course, board approval on those projects. We have a person who's been a volunteer coordinator for the past year. She's beefed up our program. We have the ability to work with volunteers in a number of ways now. We have an additional 900 hours this year over last year, which has been really exciting to see so many people volunteering in so many different ways. And you know, people love their library, and we're happy to give them these opportunities. We have a new partnership with the I School at Illinois. We regularly have I School students as practicum students as well as paid interns, but we wanted to create a more rich experience for the practicum students. They're normally with us 100 hours for a semester, and then they leave. And they were also looking for a richer public library experience. So in addition to having the regular number of practicum students each semester, which can vary, they have pledged two special apprentices, one for adult and new services, and one for the Champaign County Historical Archives. The students will work instead of 100 hours a semester, 15 hours per week for the first semester, and they do that for free as a class they pay for. But the second semester, they also work for us 15 hours a week as an independent study course. The I School that semester will waive their fees and class, class costs, and also give them a stipend of $5,000. So we have two additional students that will be with us to share their expertise and knowledge as a student learning, and that we'll be able to share our expertise with them. And because they'll be with us longer, everyone, including the patrons, will have a richer experience. So we're very excited about this and the, the number of ways that we can work together with a tight budget to be able to provide benefit to our patrons. And of course, I have to end by saying that summer reading has started. We're here to serve our community, and we do that through the donations of the Friends of the Urbana Free Library, which fund all the book giveaways. So reading takes you everywhere. Please come and sign up. And do you have any questions for me?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Finance Director Elizabeth Hannan, and she'll be discussing vehicle leasing.
So before we get started here, I do want to mention that I have backup from some Public Works folks tonight, in case you have specific questions about the fleet. So of course, Bill Gray, our Public Works Director, is here. But also in the back, we have Tony Arnold, who's our fleet manager. So if we need to call on them, they're available.
So I, I give you a fairly detailed memo on this, but, so I'll give it a quick review. But basically, our current practice is that we make annual payments into a vehicle and equipment replacement fund. And in doing that, we're basically paying in advance. So if we have a vehicle that has a 10-year life, we're putting in a portion of that each year up until the 10th year, when that vehicle is retired normally on schedule and then replaced with a new vehicle. So that way, we have cash on hand when it's time to purchase a vehicle. The problem we have is that that funding hasn't been done in an adequate manner in the past. So in 2015, after I got here, our city accountant did a comprehensive review. She projected all of the expenses out for like, something like 30 years, and we realized that very soon, we were going to have a deficit of $2.7 million if we were to make all of the planned replacements on schedule. So obviously, we had to do something. And at that time, the budget looked pretty good, and so we decided that over three years, we would make an additional transfer from the general fund to the vehicle and equipment replacement fund to fix that $2.7 million hole. Eventually, as the budget got tighter, we extended that. Until now, we're really looking at 15 years at $180,000 a year. So the budget, after, after we got to 15 years at $180,000 a year, the budget was still very tight, and we started looking for savings opportunities. And we've talked about many of those in terms of the FY19 budget. We were focusing primarily on options that would have the least impact on staffing and services, so we started looking at leasing as an option to reduce the general fund cost to fix our funding problem in the vehicle and equipment replacement fund. Now, I'm gonna talk about the lease option. There are some unknowns. We don't have a lease agreement at this point, and so obviously, if we proceed in this direction, there'll be a lot of details that have to work, be worked out. We'll have to sign a contract with somebody that'll set the exact terms that will be part of our lease agreement. But basically, leasing and purchasing outright are just different financial mechanisms for acquiring vehicles. Leasing allows us to acquire our vehicles without having to set aside those funds in advance. So when we lease, we eliminate that upfront payment that we need to make for those 50 vehicles, and that reduces the annual transfer, that extra $180,000, by $61,000 a year over the next 13 years, as we work through that entire 15-year period. So that's partly because we no longer have to pay in for those 50 vehicles that become part of the leasing program, and it's partly because the money that we have reserved thus far for those 50 vehicles remains in the vehicle and equipment replacement fund to offset the cost of other vehicles that are still in the VERF. So that $61,000 is roughly equivalent to one position that might otherwise have to be eliminated as we go through budget cuts. So in addition to the $61,000 a year, our cash outlays for purchases or leases, when you compare them, we expect them to be about $385,000 less over 15 years compared to the cash outlays to actually purchase vehicles. So there would also be some additional savings, very, very difficult to predict, but because as we turn vehicles over more frequently, so in the leasing program, we would plan to have normally a five-year lease, we would bring into the fleet more fuel-efficient vehicles. And also, because we're not holding on to our vehicles for as long, we would expect our maintenance costs to go down over time. So we're like, gonna be dealing with vehicles that would, for most of the time we own them, be under warranty. So comparing the two options, continuing as we are or leasing, continuing our current practice would result in annual expenses that are higher, a total of 1.17 million over the next 15 years higher. $790,000 of that 1.17 million, the large, so the largest part of it is because of the issue with the past underfunding that we no longer have to correct, at least to the same extent. $385,000 of that 1.17 million is just a reduction in annual costs. So lease, leasing, doing the leasing program could, would minimize, minimize our need for budget reductions. And I'm just gonna show you a couple charts. This first one was actually in the memo that I provided to you, and it shows the projected cost here, the orange line, for purchasing vehicles outright. And this is just the purchase cost, the net purchase cost. And then for the lease payments, what we would project our cost to be over that period. So that difference between those two lines at the end, because it's cumulative, is the $385,000. If we include with that the savings in terms of not having to fix our underfunding problem in the VERF, those lines get even farther apart, and so you can see this difference here at the end totals about 1, 1.17 million dollars. So I know that's a real quick run-through. I'm not, I'm not sure how much time you all really had to dig into the memo.
Thank you. Any questions for Elizabeth? Bill?
Yeah, so do, just, did, do these leases have like maximum mileage that you can get on a vehicle, and you have to pay a certain amount for miles over that, or?
So typically, when you do, when a, when a government or a company does a vehicle lease, it's an open-ended lease. So it's not so much tied to a maximum mileage amount. Basically, what you do is you, you project the residual value at the end of the lease, so the amount of value that's gonna be left in that vehicle at the end when it's disposed of, and you finance the difference between the purchase price and the residual value. Now, sometimes, it could happen, depending on how we project the residual value, that we actually don't quite make that number, in which case, we would owe the leasing company. More likely, more often, it's gonna work the other way, but I'm pretty confident that overall, if we're conservative about predicting the residual value, while we may have some vehicles where we actually owe at the end, for the most part, it'll wash out.
Okay. And that's kind of the incentive for us to maintain it well, to, does that add to the residual value?
Sure. I mean, a vehicle in better condition will have a higher resale value at the end of the lease period. And we, and we do maintain our vehicles very well. The, the equipment services staff take very good care of our vehicles.
I understand why it would be beneficial to especially lease the, like, the green vehicles, because especially if there's tax credits, then the private company can probably take advantage of the tax credits when they buy the vehicle where we wouldn't be able to use that. So that makes sense. I don't really follow very well why, how, how somebody can lease vehicles to us and make money, and we still come out ahead too, but I'm willing to kind of go with it for now. On that last graph you showed, I'm trying to figure out where the 1.17 million is, because those are, okay, well, that graph.
Yeah.
Looks different than the one in my paper, I guess.
Yeah. So the one, the one I put in the memo is the one that includes just the net, the net purchase and the lease cost, but the difference gets bigger. This one actually includes the fund, the, the fix for the funding problem in the VERF. And so that's why on this chart, the difference is much bigger.
So is leasing just kind of another way of financing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It's just, what we're, what we're doing, if we lease, what we're doing is we're financing the value of that vehicle that we're gonna use over the term of the lease. So we're not financing 100% of the value, because we're only financing up to that residual value.
Okay. Thanks.
Eric?
I'm, I've also been pondering the mathematics of this, because you can't get something for nothing. We don't have a license to print money. So it must be, I mean, if we purchased the vehicles, then over some number of years, we would dispose of them, and we would get some price, some, something for them. So it has to be that what we put into the lease over that same number of years is a smaller amount than the difference between the purchase and what we could sell it for, that somehow the lease, the leasing cost is less than the, than the, yeah, than the loss of value, at least in our hands or with our marketing ability.
Yeah. So I mean, so what we do now is most of our vehicles, we retain for 10 years. And so by the end of 10 years, there's not an awful lot of value left to get back. I was, I was looking at my budget just a few minutes ago, and I think in the last couple of years, we've received like maybe around five, so the revenue in the vehicle and equipment replacement fund from sale of vehicles was like maybe $5,000 one year, and it was much as maybe $15,000 another year. Now, some years, it would be higher, but we really sort of drive them until there's very little value left.
So the only way that it works out that I can imagine, I, I take, Elizabeth, I have so much confidence in you. I'm sure it works exactly the way that you're presenting it to us, but I, I have this nerdy desire to try to figure out why or how. I think it has to be that the leasing company has more ability to market these used vehicles and get some value out of them than we would. I mean, even if, even if we, you know, kept them a shorter, the same amount of time that we would lease them for.
Sure. I mean, that, that's true, because they do this on a very large scale.
Yeah.
The other, there's another piece of it, though, on the front end, because who knows, I, I can't even imagine how many millions of doll, millions of vehicles these big leasing companies are buying every year around the world. So even though we often buy our vehicles from state bid, the pricing that they're getting for that same vehicle is even more competitive than the state bid pricing. I mean, that may not be true in every single case, but I would bet most of the time that is true.
So it's why, it's why you pay a commission to a Realtor, because the Realtor actually knows the market and how to, you know, move things around, and the individual doesn't. And so we sort of are, we deal with the leasing company for that reason.
Jared?
One thing I was curious about Elizabeth, reading through all this stuff, was insurance? And our insurance doesn't change based on a leased vehicle versus a ownership?
No. So we are not insured, we are, we are self-insured for physical damage. I shouldn't say we're not insured, and for liability, we have a self-insured retention limit of $150,000. So, but there's, there's no need for us to change. So, but there's no need for us to change that as part of implementing a lease. I mean, we could buy insurance through a leasing company, but there's no need to do that. I'm pretty confident that they'll agree to waive that requirement, as long as we can demonstrate that we have adequate self-insurance reserves.
And then you also mentioned the opportunity for collective purchasing through joining other large municipality buy-ins and stuff like that to purchase vehicles, right? So there's another opportunity for savings there.
Yeah, so we participate, I think right now, we have about four joint purchasing agreements that we're part of, and each one of those was approved at some point in time by the city council. In particular, we want to look at one that we're not currently part of, which is, I think it's called the Interlocal Purchasing System or something. It's a co-op down in Texas.
The one you mentioned, didn't it?
Yes. And so we would certainly look at the others to see what they're offering, but they have a very attractive option with Enterprise Fleet Management. And so in order to participate in that, council would have to approve us participating in the intergovernmental agreement that makes us a member of that purchasing co-op.
Okay, thank you.
Dean?
My struggle with this is that we're viewing all the vehicles the same, because I'm thinking that maybe a vehicle that's driven by, I don't know, the zoning department or something, wouldn't be even comparable to wear and tear put on a vehicle from, say, like the police department. Would it be maybe a good idea? Have we looked at it that way?
So remember, we're talking about, we have a total fleet of about 150 vehicles, and we're talking about 50 here. We're not talking about all of them. So we're really talking about passenger vehicles and pickup trucks up to about three-quarter ton size. We're not talking about police interceptor vehicles. We're not talking about, you know, fire trucks and dump trucks and heavy equipment.
Oh, I did not. Okay, that was a missing element. All right.
Yeah, so it's just a limited portion of our fleet.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you, Elizabeth. I did want to recognize Tony Arnold, who is in charge of the fleet maintenance for the city. He and his team do an outstanding job maintaining the vehicles, and city staff will continue to maintain the, all vehicles, including the leased vehicles.
Okay, so our last budget presentation is the staffing changes that are reflected in the proposed 2019 budget, and Human Resources Director Todd Rint will be doing that.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And thank you for the opportunity to come before you. By way of introduction, I'm Todd Rint. I'm the Human Resources Director for the City of Urbana. I'd like to take a few minutes to discuss the city's staffing outlook and priorities for fiscal year 2019. Personnel costs are projected to account for 73% of fiscal year 2019 general operating fund expenditures. As the City of Urbana moves forward to build a solid foundation for the future, efforts to achieve a balanced budget through the reduction of expenditures must involve a critical examination and adjustment of staffing levels. As we discuss the proposed adjustments, I think it's important that these adjustments are undertaken subject to the following priorities. First, the priority obviously is to achieve significant savings in the general operating fund. But second, to improve staffing efficiency through leveraging the exceptional skills and talents and dedication of our existing staff. Third, to maintain the highest levels of service for our public. And then finally, wherever possible, the adjustments should reflect a strong preference for voluntary reductions. And I think it's important to make a special note of this fourth priority. Personnel changes, staffing adjustments, impact the lives of our employees in profound ways. We all tend to recognize and appreciate the significant impact of personnel changes on the employee who is affected, who we can see that individuals affected. However, I think it's important that we consider the impact of such changes on our entire workforce, both present and future. Each personnel decision, each personnel change tells a story about our fundamental values, our priorities, and our goals as an organization. As you read in the mayor's budget message, "Our staff is our city's most important asset," and it is our hope and belief that the staffing adjustments discussed below reflect this value. So first, I'd like to discuss the staffing implications of the proposed closure of the Urbana Civic Center. The Civic Center is currently staffed by three part-time positions comprising 1.75 FTEs comprised, and those FTEs are made up of one three-quarter-time civic center coordinator and two half-time civic center attendants. The Civic Center staff provide facility maintenance and custodial services, as well as serving as the primary point of contact and assistance for individuals and parties who rent the facilities. They set up chairs, they set up tables, and they set up other equipment, audiovisual equipment. It can be very physically demanding work. Upon ratification of the closure, the Human Resources Division will partner with the Public Facilities Division of the Public Works Department to, number one, provide considerable advance notice of the closure to the affected employees. We will also discuss possible employment alternatives within the city with those employees. And then finally, we will explore the feasibility and applicability of other programs, such as the voluntary separation incentive program, as well as any other outplacement services that may be available. The proposed closure would result in a staffing reduction of 1.75 FTEs and a net expenditure reduction of approximately $40,000 per year. Next, I'd like to talk about the Fire Prevention Permit inspections, FPP inspections. That program is a life safety initiative that requires annual inspections of commercial properties engaging in the handling, storage, or other use of hazardous substances. Last year, staff performed approximately 450 initial FPP inspections. Since December 2014, those FPP inspections have been performed by a retired building inspector who was hired to work 19 hours per week as a fire inspector. In March 2018, that part-time fire inspector announced his re-retirement, and the staff evaluation showed, or concluded, that those inspections could be absorbed by existing staff. The proposed reassignment of those duties would result in a staffing reduction of .45 FTE, and the net reduction would be approximately $35,000 per year. I know I'm not keeping up as I'm going forward. I apologize for that. So, the Human Relations Officer, the Human Relations Officer is responsible for administration and enforcement of the Urbana Human Rights Ordinance, the EEL Contract Compliance Program, as well as overseeing the remaining activities of the office. Prior to January 2017, the Human Relations Office was staffed by a full-time Human Relations Officer and shared an administrative assistant with the Chief of Staff. In January 2017, the individual who was then serving as the Human Relations Officer was appointed to be the Human Resources Director. And at that time, rather than replacing that individual with a full FTE, we replaced that individual in the Human Relations role with a half-time FTE, an individual who had actually retired from the city also. At that time, because that was done on an interim basis, the city did not actually change the budget level for that position. So the proposed budget proposes, or the budget proposes to make that adjustment a part of the overall budget by reducing the FTE for that line to .5. That proposed adjustment would result in a net budget reduction of approximately $36,000 per year. I think it's worth noting that in January 2017, the city also hired a full-time community outreach coordinator to focus on police community relations. On balance, even with the .5 FTE reduction in the Human Relations Officer position, the division will actually have a net of two FTEs. That staffing level is .5 FTE over the division's historic staffing level of 1.5 FTEs. So on balance, the staffing level is still higher than it has been historically. In terms of other changes that are occurring, the Finance Division, or the Finance Department, plans to implement a reorganization.
Do you want to advance yours?
Thank you. Plans to implement a reorganization that will enhance service and facilitate a more appropriate segregation of duties. This change will address issues that were raised by the city's auditors. It should be noted at the outset that the reorganization will not result in a net change in budgeted staffing levels. The reorganization will create a financial analyst position by combining an existing half-time administrative line from the Finance Department with a grants compliance specialist line from the Community Development Services Department. In addition, the existing city accountant position will be reclassified to a staff accountant position. Among other efficiencies, the reorganization will centralize tracking and reporting of grant funding within the Finance Department. I'm going to remember to advance the slide. The voluntary incentive program, the VSIP programs offer a cash incentive to employees who agree to voluntarily separate from the city within a certain period of time. Last year's VSIP program resulted in a net staffing reduction of two FTEs, or approximately, bringing in approximately $100,000 in annual budget savings. Based upon those positive results, the city plans to offer another VSIP opportunity in the upcoming year. We've reviewed the feedback we received during the first round of VSIP and are exploring ways to create a more compelling opportunity for interested employees by adjusting timeframes, payment structures, and qualifying criteria. We plan to complete these adjustments and launch the second round of VSIP by mid-July. We are also making adjustments to our staffing request-to-review process. Currently, requests to review vacant or newly established positions must be approved by the applicable department head, the Finance Director, the Human Resources Director, and the mayor. Future requests in the upcoming year will be subjected to a higher level of scrutiny. In each case, we will carefully evaluate whether it is feasible to reassign the vacated position's duties to existing staff, or in some manner, reduce staffing costs associated with the performance of those duties. This process will enable the city to achieve certain reductions through voluntary attrition and leverage the productivity of our high-performing staff. Finally, I think it would be helpful to just provide a very brief statement on staff compensation going into this year. Our non-union and IAFF employees are budgeted to receive a 1% cost-of-living increase. While the city has not concluded ongoing negotiations with AFSCME and FOP, we are committed to reaching internally comparable agreements consistent with the financial challenges reflected in this year's budget. Are there any questions?
Dennis?
Well, of course, there's a lot of interest in the proposal to save $40,000 by the reduction of three part-time positions who now manage activities at the Civic Center. So if these individuals are re-employed or reassigned, work in other sections of the city offices, how will the financial savings be realized?
Well, if that were the case, it would have to be a vacant or existing vacancy, and so we would just be filling that vacancy somewhere else where we will be accomplishing the same labor with one less person, ultimately. But that is just, I'm sorry to interrupt, that's one alternative. The other alternatives are to work with those staff to potentially determine whether or not a VSIP is appropriate, or whether or not outplacement services are also appropriate.
Right. So you're not trying to reposition them necessarily in work in the city, because that might be creating an additional position in some other department?
No, this would not be creating an additional position in another department.
Yeah, I know it wouldn't be. You're not, I guess what I mean is that you're trying to avoid that. So really, you'd just like to lay them off, or, well, you'd like them to retire, or something like that.
Well, I think there are alternatives. If there is another position that is vacant, yes, then, and that person is qualified, we would certainly consider them and encourage them to apply for that position. But that wouldn't result in a net increase.
But let me ask about the building itself. I got a lot of emails about people who, especially from the Arts Committees, that really liked to use the building for their events, whether it's going to be, you know, a Christmas market, or a quilting show, or something else. If we board up the building and it's no longer used, there are still issues about securing the roof so that there's not future damage. By closing the building, are you basically saying that there is no interest in the city for reconfiguring the building or retaining the building as a usable city space?
I would say, because this is a presentation about personnel matters, I'm going to refer that question over to Bill Gray with our Public Safety Department.
And I hope this is still appropriate, because I'm trying to understand the closure of the building and what that means for the city for the next couple of years, maintaining a building that has leakage problems, or whatever it might be.
Well, at this juncture, or the best answer I can give you is that this would be part of the facility planning effort by which we're in the process of making a selection of an architect or an architectural team to review this and all our facilities, not to mention programs and needs, et cetera. So I can't tell you that next week, we're going to fix the roof, but it's certainly mindful of us to know what's going on in that facility. And if it is closed, what have you, we're going to do whatever we can to facilitate the planning process. And if there has to be some temporary repairs or what have you, we'll consider those things. But I don't have a specific answer as to how we're going to try to preserve that building with its current shortcomings with the lack of funding that we currently have.
And my understanding is that we're just initiating really a search for a person who could do the appropriate evaluation. So it might be five years before we actually have a completed facilities plan, or the mayor says no, so maybe it can be three years?
The proposal, we received seven proposals, and the selection will be made fairly soon. So the study and evaluation will get underway later this year, probably early fall or late summer. So the plan is to have it within two years.
So the building could be mothballed for two years?
Correct.
Yeah, this isn't an HR question either. As long as we're on the budget, we had some good news, I guess, this week about additional money that will be coming from the state that we weren't really counting on. I was wondering if Elizabeth had any figures on that.
Talking about the income tax.
A little bit. They were going to take a little bit less away from us this year than they did last year.
Yeah, so what we're hearing is an improvement over what we expected when we put together the financial forecast and the budget, but I think what we need to remember is, these were all revenues that we received in full prior to FY '18. So we're getting back part of what we lost a year ago. So there's several pieces in the budget that affect us. So the income tax, the 10% reduction that we took last year will now be a 5% reduction, and that's probably about $200,000. The change in the collection fee on the home real sales tax will now be 1.5% instead of 2%. of 2%. That's probably about $25,000. The part that we don't know, that I haven't really been able to get a lot of information on at this point, is there's there's a diversion of personal property replacement tax revenue. And I'm not sure exactly what the impact of that is at this point. So that'll offset those gains to some extent. We don't know how much. And put this in context of what we've been discussing with the financial forecast, probably looking at, you know, up to $2.5 million in budget reductions or new revenues over a period of several years. So it may make this a little easier for us as we go down this path, but it really doesn't fix the whole problem.
Okay.
Any other personnel questions? Sorry, Bill, did I interrupt you?
I just wanted to, I mean, I think I've heard more from people about the Civic Center as well. A lot of people are really concerned about that. I think one of the things is that there doesn't seem to be, I mean, there isn't a plan. And I understand why. I mean, if we do anything to improve it at this point, it could be sunk costs. And I understand we don't want to just sink costs into it and then change our mind after the facility study. But if there was some way to wait until we had more solid plans through this facility study so that we would at least know if we're going to close it, then what we're going to use it for or, you know, what it will be used for. So I just, I'd ask people to kind of rethink if there's anything we can do to keep it open until we know more about what it would be used for in the future. Yeah, that's really, I mean, I think the Civic Center is really a concern of a lot of people. A lot of people have used it and I understand the issues, but I just wish there was another another solution here, so that's all.
Eric?
So I know this isn't, this is back to the Civic Center and I, again, I hear a lot about it from constituents. One thing that we didn't, one question that I forgot to ask, we've talked about just money for replacing the roof. And I know it really, Public Works people don't like to do little half-measures, but is it feasible to go into a holding pattern where we patch the roof in order to arrest further deterioration and buy a little time to for folks to either, you know, raise money, find some great donor or whatever to somehow, you know, delay the day when we have to kill it?
Albert, if I give you an answer next Monday night on that?
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Next Monday is our discussion of the budget. The rest of the budget.
Okay, thank you, Todd. Just a reminder, Elizabeth and I will be presenting to the employees essentially the same PowerPoint that we gave to you a couple of weeks ago on the budget. We'll also be recording one of those and it'll be available for employees to watch. And the reason for that is is we wanted everyone to have the same information, accurate information and consistent information, and we'll also be able to answer questions. So this week, we will have five separate presentations for employees, both during the day and in the evening. So hopefully, we can catch everyone's schedules. Last presentation we have is the Consolidated Social Service Funding 2018 End of the Year Report.
So I emailed the annual report to you and we are also passing out hard copies. I want to thank Matt Rejek. He's the one who helped pull a lot of this information together. So this is the first annual report and expect that we'll be giving this annual report on a yearly basis for foreseeable future. So starting on page four is the narrative report. So as you'll see, $250,000 was committed, and this is for this current fiscal year, fiscal year 2017, 2018. So $250,000 was committed to support 35 different programs through over 26 separate agencies. $175,000 of that was from Cunningham Township and then $75,000 from City General Fund and a small portion of the federal Community Development Block grant funds. All grantee agencies have been responsive to requests for information and documentation. So wanted to point out in the second paragraph, there was a couple of successes in that we awarded over $31,000 to Courage Connection during a time of critical need due to the state budget crisis and also provided funding to RACES in the amount of $6,400, which also helped them during the budget crisis. Two new agencies or applicants were funded, the First Followers Reentry Youth Apprenticeship Training Program and the St. Matthew Lutheran Church Solar Gracia Farm. And then two agencies were awarded funding but chose only partial funding, and that was GCAP because they'd received federal funds from HUD for HOPL, which is housing opportunities for persons with AIDS. And so they decided to terminate their award early. And then Rosecrance, Champaign-Urbana, had also forgotten its second installment for its runaway and homeless youth program. And then, of course, neither one applied for fiscal year 18, 19 funding. As stated in the last paragraph, local funding from the Consolidated Social Service Funding plays a critical role for social service providers that serve Urbana residents. In addition to the direct subsidy, the social service funding also allows social service agencies to grow their capacity and foster new relationships with other local funding entities, and also it provides leveraging for other funding as well. So agencies that receive awards through the social service fund largely provide services that are either unduplicated or are in short supply in our community. So with this impact in mind, the role of the social service funding cannot be overstated. So that is the general narrative report. Page five shows the guiding principles that were used to allocate funding through the 1718 social service funding process, noting the five key service areas and as such. So with that, page six shows a financial summary, and this was the funding that was allocated to the agencies and programs. And then the last two columns show city and CDBG funding, the other ones that were not listed, those were the Cunningham Township who provided the funding. And then on page seven is the grant award data, which is Consolidated Social Service Funding awards by social service sector. So the dollar amounts shown in the above chart represent the amount of funding that has been awarded to agencies in their respective criteria. And amount, this is amount that's already been paid out, and the amount that is waiting paid out is in the next two pages. On page eight and nine, you see the grant award progress. So this shows that whether an agency might have received one installment or two installments or four installments, depending on the amount of money that they were allocated. And the dollar amounts showing in the installments, that's what they've been paid out. If they were to receive more installments, but they haven't requested those, then there's dashes. The black shows that they only got one or two installments. So this shows all the agencies from 1718 and whether they have requested their funding or how much they've requested. And it's all in alphabetical order. So as you can see, there's a few that have not requested any funding yet, but they have been emailed, put on notice that they need to get their information to us and their requests so that they can be paid out both the end of the fiscal year. So that with that, that is our report. And if there's any questions, I will try to answer as best I can. Yes?
Dennis and then Jared.
So two of the agencies that stand out very sharply about people who have been allotted money, but they're not, they haven't, I guess, what, finished their paperwork or haven't requested the funding yet before the end of the fiscal year, which is ticking away, is Champaign County healthcare consumers, which kind of surprises me because they're so professional. What's going on there or you know?
That I don't know. Like I said, we have reached out to all the agencies who have not requested all their money or haven't requested any to send the information that they need.
Same same with Neighborhood Connections Center. That's a real important local service.
Yes.
All right, well, just remind them and hopefully they'll respond.
Jared?
So Kelly, one thing I was curious about when I'm looking at that pie chart of where the money went to by category of type of social service fund is thinking about the effectiveness of money being used. And, you know, I know that we have made some adjustments to how people apply to kind of try and flesh some of that out to say, oh, well, you know, we have this many fewer residents facing homelessness this year thanks to dollars donated by this. There are graduation rates from this school are, you know, increased by this much and, you know, could, you know, I know a lot of things affect those kinds of things and it's not any one organization or one program can cannot be attributed to any success nor failure. But it just makes me curious if we track any of those kinds of things, if the agencies do themselves, because I'm always interested in, you know, what happens after the fact and, you know, whether or not we're being effective in our selections, if we're meeting the needs in our community. I know Danielle was going to stay and try and have some comments for this, but she had to go home to take care of her kid.
Right.
But so half of that question is for Danielle. I'm sure she will be watching later to catch that, so.
Right, plus next Monday is the final recommendation from staff. So she will be here as well as Matt Rejek. I won't, unfortunately, I will be on vacation. So but they will be here and they can certainly, you know, make sure that they will know that they can answer that question.
Sure. Matt and Danielle, if you're watching, we would be certainly interested in hearing more about the effectiveness of how we're choosing to allocate our resources.
Eric?
How does this pattern of, you know, how the outlays go during the course of the year, how does this pattern that we're looking at now compare with previous years? Is it common for the invoices to come in in a bunch in the last part of the fiscal year?
I couldn't give you the percentage, but I know there are, I can, I know that there are a few agencies that wait. Most do not and do request because grant agreements are due like by October 1st. So in order for them to get their first installment, they have to submit an audit. If they'd received funding the previous year, they have to submit their fourth quarter report. So there's things that they have to submit and most agencies submit those things and they.
Yeah. It looks as though everybody did what they had to do to get started. And the question is, and I assume that there's still, the vast majority, I assume all of them or practically all of them are still functioning, they're still making expenditures, but they're sort of making expenditures out of their reserves and they'll refill their reserves when they get the rest of the grant money. So but I just wondered how, you know, there's, there seems to be this time lag between their functioning on the one hand, or wait, wait a minute, when did their year start?
Well, our fiscal year is, of course, July 1st.
July 1st, yeah.
So there are some that are July 1st to June 30th. There are some that are October 1st to September 30th, and there are some that are on the calendar year.
Oh, okay. So so some of these folks, so the ones that are missing, like their last one or two, that doesn't, they're not equally far behind because some of them are in our fiscal year and some of them are October 1st and some of them even December 1st?
Right. I can certainly, we can look at the last several years and can bring that information or can email and send that to you as far as the comparing of last several years with this.
My expectation is that this is not, that these blank spaces are not a are not a sign that there's some serious problem there, but it would be it would be good to get a sense of how the, you know, how the cash flow typically goes through their year and.
Any other questions for Kelly? Okay, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes the presentations for tonight. Reports of standing committees, committee of the whole, Bill Brown?
Yeah, we met last week and forwarded several items to council. First was a motion for the replacement of existing brick sidewalk on Anderson Street between High, East High and East Green with new concrete sidewalk. And we didn't make a recommendation on this one. There were only four of us at the meeting last week. So some of these things, I think we just wanted to discuss further with with more people here.
Did you move?
There's no motion on this one. This is the sidewalk. So if somebody makes a motion, I looked up the ordinance, actually, and this would require four votes because it's the majority of the alderpersons in holding office. So four of the five of us would have to vote to make this concrete. And there may be more information from Public Works.
We also have two members of the public. So we'll go with staff report and then we'll take public input. Bill?
Yes, a couple of things. I think the memo is pretty clear, but let me just go over a little bit of the history here. Ollie American Water is upgrading water mains east of the city building. Our water rates, of course, pay for those improvements throughout both cities. And their method of instruction, construction is typically through directional boring. So what I mean by that is they try to minimize any damage to parkways, rideways, sidewalks, streets, et cetera, by having a pit, bore a six-inch water main and receive it at, you know, multiple hundreds of feet or down the way. In this particular case, due to various conflicts, et cetera, they had to open cut and they chose under the sidewalk. It happens to be a brick sidewalk. City staff is very attuned to the major brick block walk requirements and preservations throughout the city. And that's always the intent to replace in kind is a determination by Ollie American was made that they needed to put this water main in through the open trench method. They were also knew they had to replace the brick in kind. The property owners approached the contractor in the city, not the reverse, and they were the ones that said, well, if there's a choice or can we look at this, we prefer concrete over bricks. So I just wanted to make that clarification that initially all three adjacent property owners wanted to convert to concrete, as is the practice in ordinance is that that's a council decision, it's not a staff decision, hence it's been before us last week and tonight. As an update today, this afternoon, two of the three property owners approached us to say that after considering the question more fully, I have decided that I prefer historic brick sidewalks to border my property. So two of those property owners of the three have changed their mind to go back to the brick. Tonight, you heard from the gentleman who, in the contrary, said he would prefer concrete. So I wanted to provide that information to you in your deliberations and in your decisions.
Thank you, Bill.
We have two items of public input. First is for Margaret Miller. She doesn't wish to speak, but she opposes replacing the brick.
She doesn't wish to speak, but she opposes replacing the brick with concrete. And then the last person to speak on this will be Tracy Satterthwaite.
Hi, I spoke a little bit last week, have done a little bit more research, and I am sorry that I did not hear the opening comments earlier today, and so I hope I'm not repeating too much. I will try and keep this very short. I did send out an email to all of our council members, and I am not convinced that everybody read them, read, read message, so I will just go over a few of those points and a couple of concerns that I have. I am very passionate about our brick sidewalks, I do want to keep our brick sidewalks, and as I said in that, I, it, this is not logical, passion is not logical, but then not very much about neighborhoods really is logical. But some of the things that are logical is the brick can last a very long time, several hundred years in some cases. Ours are, I understand, maybe eighty to a hundred years old already. Many of those bricks have not been replaced in that length of time, and, and many of them have had very little maintenance, so they, they are doing pretty darn well for that long. Concrete sidewalks, on the other hand, in our climate, or luck, and with trees that we love to have, are lucky to last twenty years without, without some kind of maintenance. I will concede that brick sidewalks, when they are not well maintained, are hazardous. Concrete sidewalks, when not maintained, are hazardous, and we can see examples as we walk throughout the neighborhood of both brick and concrete that have not been well maintained and certainly are tripping hazards. Brick initially costs about three times as much to lay, but to, to do repairs and maintenance of it is ten, it, the concrete costs ten to thirty times more to, to maintain. Brick is reusable. You can take that brick up, move it around, put it back in. Concrete becomes a landfill problem. Brick sidewalks are permeable and tree-friendly, and we do have a, we do have a love for trees in our, in our community. Most of these points that I've just given were from an engineer who is working with Louisville, Kentucky, and their decision to make, whether to replace brick with concrete, and this was a research, the project that he did with that. I sent the, the connection, the, the site for that. In looking at this specific section of sidewalk, it, this entire block is brick right now. It is actually the only entire block in historic East Urbana that is brick. Across the street from that is brick. If you put concrete in there, it's patchworking it even more than it had been before. You say that, that the city did not approach the homeowners, but it seems that that may not be true, and that my understanding is from a couple of the homeowners that they were approached by the city and they, that did not initiate the conversation. This brings a concern to me about what the purpose is of the city in doing that. Why would that be brought up when it is a goal of our community to maintain its historic Did look into a couple of other, a couple of other cities. Bloomington is getting rid of all their brick. That's a community not too far from us, but they have a total of one mile of brick sidewalks. We have a lot more than that, and it would be nice to keep it in my mind. On the other hand, Washington DC has made the decision to take two of their, their historic neighborhoods, one of them being Georgetown, I can't remember the other one, and they are taking up the concrete and putting brick back in, because they feel like it ties that neighborhood together and because it maintains that historical view. There's a few other towns that have similar things, that this conversation is by far not new, not just for our community. At any rate, just one more quick thing that I wanted to say, and that was, if we're going to ask people to, if they want to have the brick changed to concrete, can we also ask that the concrete be changed to brick? That would be my, my preference in my own, for my own homes that I own, so.
Thank you. Discussion?
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tracy. Vote for Tracy.
Oh.
Yes, go ahead.
I heard this anecdotally, but my understanding is that the homeowner, the, while the property owner is here tonight at 607 East Green Street, as you said, the, his grandson lives on the corner house, and I understand that perhaps you or Margaret had talked to that gentleman and had a little bit of a different point of view. Do you want to share that?
He, he said that he really likes the brick. He was going, he was initially saying what he, he thought the concrete would be a wonderful thing. He's looking for a smooth sidewalk that doesn't take a lot to maintain. In talking with him, I said, you know, well, the rest of the block is brick, and if it's, if the maintenance of it is going to be a problem, first of all, he'll get a new brick sidewalk, which is a whole lot easier to maintain than an old one that, that particular sidewalk had been covered with mud and, and grass for a long time, it had sunk in and it was, was one that had not been well maintained. I, I got talking to him about it and said, well, maybe we just need to have a, a neighborhood day or a couple of days every summer to spray all of our sidewalks at once, and he sounded like that would be kind of a fun thing, that this would be something that would bring the neighborhood together. And I gather that the, well, I mean, I know that the owner doesn't actually live in our neighborhood, so, but this grandson does.
Bill?
That was Steve's name?
No.
Okay.
No, the grandson's name is, is Geddy, and he lives on Green.
I, I just wanted to say, I, I feel the same way, I don't blame somebody that does that, I, I'm go, this is like a coin toss almost for me, because the last person I talked to is always the one I identify with, and I go back and forth, so I can understand somebody changing their mind.
Yeah, well, he first, he very first thing he said is, the sidewalk across the street where she, that woman has maintained it beautifully, he says, it's so beautiful. So he likes it, he has, he likes the aesthetic of it. He doesn't want to have to do a lot of maintenance, is his, that's his concern.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Discussion? Or not?
I think we need a motion for discussion.
Sure, I guess for a purpose of discussion, I'll move to, I guess we need a motion to replace the brick sidewalk with concrete.
I'll second that motion.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Dean. Now we can have discussion. Dennis?
Okay, well, certainly, thanks. Well, I did talk to you, this group is the committee of the whole, about my concerns, partly the fact that the brick sidewalk ordinance indicates that this particular block and others in our neighborhood are to be maintained as brick. That's the preference of the city council back in 2002. Now, there were some streets or sidewalks along the streets that were indicated to be either or, that there could be changes depending upon property owners' desires. The East Urbana neighborhood, historic East Urbana neighborhood accommodated the city by take, allowing the city to remove large sections of native brick sidewalk on the north side of Green Street to make a pedestrian pathway from the downtown to Victory Park. I don't see so many people using it, and I do see a lot of people zooming along in the street because the street's well paved and bicyclists, people walk, I walk a lot of times in the street. I run in the morning, and I sometimes am running on the sidewalks, and I'm sometimes running on the streets, and I'm often jumping over very badly shifted sidewalk slabs at, just across from 707 East Illinois, right next to Melissa Merly's home, and there are parts of the brick sidewalks in my neighborhood that the bricks were removed eighteen years ago, red gravel was placed to fill the gap, and we've never seen the city come back to actually lay new brick. So we are suffering from lack of maintenance of brick sidewalks. We don't see that lack of maintenance quite so severely with cement until maybe a truck goes across them or some reason, there's a shift in the tree rooting, and suddenly you've got like a, an inch, inch and a half trip barrier, or you just have slab that's got to be totally replaced, or maybe three in a row. The Huna neighborhood in 2005, as a supplement to the, the comprehensive plan drafted by the city, drafted a neighborhood content, a comprehensive plan, and in it, they reiterated in several locations that brick sidewalks were an important part of the historic East Urbana neighborhood. Certainly, they contributed to the fact that it is a historic neighborhood. You know, this neighborhood was not settled really until Tom, Thompson Weber passed away, because he maintained a large farm immediately east of Vine Street, and he, he owned the property all the way, well, past Cottage Grove, I mean, actually, probably owned it like a mile past Cottage Grove. So it's a fairly, it hasn't, it hadn't been developed quite as fast as the West Urbana area, but it's pretty famous for having a tree on Main Street under which Lincoln gave a very important address in the campaign of 1856, and that's marked. So we're pretty proud of the history that are, is in the community. Joseph Royer's, one of, one of the very few remaining residences designed by Joseph Royer is right across the street from me, Kitty Cor, Kitty Corner on Green and Grove. So I appreciate the fact that Mr. Lingwood, Linggood?
Levingood.
Levingood is concerned about safety issues and he prefers to have cement, but we found that two other of the individual property owners and residents along the street disagree now, and really at a meeting that we held at the Pi Center last Thursday night, we had about twenty-two people come. Overwhelmingly, it was voted upon that we supported the restoration of that section as brick, and we are doing it because the brick will be laid in primo fashion, about as good as you could possibly have new brick laid, and it'll be laid at the expense of the Illinois Water, not at the city. The labor will be supplied by Illinois Water, and why don't we ask them to restore the brick and the historic quality of that street? I'm concerned also because that company is, is proceeding down the block to the south and digging up other complete street sidewalks. If we start letting the, our brick sidewalks disappear to cement, we are going to be dripping and drabbing away the historic quality of our community. I think there'd be an outrage in West Urbana if this was, this came up for review. So why is East Urbana considered less important for restoration of its brick sidewalks? So I just ask this group to please turn down the request, do not support the motion, and allow Illinois Water to replace the brick sidewalk, not only in this block but all the other blocks where they're upheaving the brick, do a good job, and we will actually gain several, several blocks of restored brick sidewalk, which we can be very proud of. If you want to go and see the results of laying new brick sidewalk in our community, just go across the street on Urbana and Green, and for the, at the first house, there's been a whole section that's been relaid, and it's fine, it's excellent, it's smooth, it's brick, but it's not a stumbling course, which most other unmaintained brick sidewalks do become after eighty years. So I would hope that you would support the community of East Urbana.
Any other comments? Eric?
So, I feel like in a small minority, because I'm not passionate about this issue, but we have brick in front of our house. We have a neighbor who has reduced mobility due to a stroke, and she is, you know, she goes up and down the brick walks in a motorized chair and does just fine, and the only time I can remember actually doing a face plant from tripping over a sidewalk, it was actually a cement sidewalk. On the other hand, I confess that I do not spray poisons on my sidewalk or anywhere else on my property, so if that makes me a, a preservation criminal in anybody's court of opinion, I stand convicted. The, so I don't know. My own experience with brick is fine, it's even better than cement. I understand that it's going to be more expensive to lay the brick. I, I guess I would like to ask Public Works a question. Is there a significant difference in the public resources that it takes to keep brick sidewalks from being a hazard as compared to cement sidewalks?
If you're talking brand-new each, brand-new brick, brand-new concrete, I haven't researched that answer. I think tonight we heard someone talk about that through their research, but what I can tell you, and we haven't done this the last couple of years, is that we will spray for those property owners that are okay with using a product to, you know, kill any vegetation within the brick itself. So that's our maintenance for concrete, typically we don't do that. But clearly, both products throughout the city, there is much need, as you've heard tonight, and we know that, and we have very limited budgets to deal with that, but I think in our, the CIP presentation last Tuesday night, we showed where we did do some brick work recently, and we have some brick contracts going out this summer, too, in various areas of the city. So every year, we do a small amount of concrete work, small amount of brick work for what our budgets allow, but we just can't address all the areas that need repair.
So, yeah, I, I, I mean, you know, I tried, as I often do on these issues, to see if there's actually something approaching scholarly research on, on this, and I can't find a thing. So, okay, well, I guess I'll vote one way or the other.
Any other comments? And I would remind council, we have ten items yet to cover tonight.
Very quick question, if I may.
Dean?
Bill, are, so we're not using the old bricks, this is, new bricks get put in, the old ones?
No, the old ones will be reused.
They're reused.
Yeah, and that is a beauty of these eighty or a hundred or whatever they are year-old bricks, is they do last.
Okay.
Some may be chipped or cracked or what have you in the, in the removal process, but, no, we reuse those brick favors.
Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, I think, I mean, personally, I think for, for a lot of areas, concrete makes more sense, because especially for, with small wheels like walkers and rollerblades, things like that, they'll just move a lot better on the brick. I do think that when they're done well, and there was one done well, I think about twelve or fifteen years ago, down the block from me on Birch Street just south of Leo School, and it's still in great condition, and the property owner there takes real good care of it, he does spray. But also, when I looked up the ordinance, it's obvious that the people, the council that passed this really were trying to make a strong statement by designating these major brick walk blocks. Not only did they require Not only did they require majority of the auditors holding office, rather than a simple majority of the people at a meeting, they also said that one of the criterias would be that we would find that due to changes in the vicinity of a specific request for a waiver, a brick sidewalk no longer serves as an enhancement. I don't think I've seen evidence that there have been any changes in the vicinity, so I think the reasons that they chose these blocks to be major brick blocks, unless we change the ordinance, should probably stand, so I don't feel I could vote for concrete.
Jared?
Just one last one, and this one is for our BPAC Chair. Does, that's you, right, Bill?
Yes.
I'm just curious whether or not brick versus concrete makes, do you guys make evaluations based on those different types of surfaces for grades for cities or anything like that? Do cities with large brick yards get lower grades based on those kinds of things?
Yeah, that's a good question. We've discussed it before, we haven't taken a position on it as a committee. There probably is, I know, we're currently contracting the pedestrian master plan to a regional planning commission, and there's like a bicycle level of service, there's also a pedestrian level of service, I think, so that probably plays into it, but I don't know how, I don't know if Bill or Craig is...
I'm not aware of any brick bike facilities, and if this helps in your answer, you know, if you look at all the American with Disability Act ramps, sidewalk ramps at streets, we do put those in concrete, not brick. And that's by the standard, national standard, PROAG, which is a Public Right-of-Way Access Guideline standard. So they are not in brick, they're in concrete. So if that gives you an indication for safety reasons on a ramp for peoples that may have a disability, there's a response.
Sure. The reason why I was asking is because I think, for me, largely, the argument for making accommodations for those with disabilities is a strong one, and I think it's, has a lot of merits. I think that the argument for keeping the identity of Urbana with brick sidewalks has a lot of merits. They're both very differently founded arguments, they come from very different places and very different kinds of concerns. For the, I think in this case, because of the limited scope of how much we're talking about replacing or not replacing, I think if we were talking about a large path of connectivity from the neighborhood all the way to downtown, or if we were talking about replacing multiple blocks with concrete and creating a large connectivity path, I would be more inclined to lean towards that. But because it would just be one section of a full square block of brick that would not, you know, sufficiently address all the other issues that are surrounding it, I think that the, the brick would be sufficient, and as such, I will not be supporting moving this motion forward.
Are we ready to vote? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Council members Brown?
No.
Hazen?
No.
Jacobson?
No.
Miller?
No.
Roberts?
No.
That motion fails.
Okay, I guess, thank you.
Next is Resolution Number 2018-05-021R, Resolution approving the Champaign-Urbana Solid Waste Disposal System annual budget, fiscal year 2018-2019. For the committee, I move approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Dean. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
That motion passes. Bill?
Next is Resolution Number 2018-05-022R, Resolution approving the Capitol Improvement Plan. For the committee, I move approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Dennis. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
That motion passes. I would like to note, for the next two ordinances, per law, it requires six of seven votes, so the easiest way to deal with this is for the committee chair to move, to get a second, and then to have subsequent motion to defer to the next council meeting. So we'll need a motion and a second for that as well.
Okay, ordinance number 2018-05-037, an ordinance vacating an alley, north alley of Water Street, east of Poplar Street. For the committee, I move approval.
I'll second.
And I'll make a motion...
Okay, moved by Bill, seconded by Dennis.
And I'll make a motion that we hold this final vote until the next council meeting.
Defer to the next.
Defer until the next council meeting.
Move to defer.
Move to defer.
I'll second that if you need a second.
Okay. Moved by Jared, seconded by Dean to defer.
Next, you don't need to vote on that, right? It's automatic, okay. Next is ordinance number 2018-05-038, an ordinance vacating a certain portion of an alley south of Green Street between Urbana Avenue and Maple Street. For the committee, I move approval.
And I'll second.
Okay.
Move to defer.
I'll second the deferral.
Okay.
Dennis?
Jared. Jared seconded the original motion, then Eric and Dennis made the second one.
Next is ordinance number 2018-05-039, an ordinance amending Schedule Q of Section 23-184 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking during certain hours on certain streets.
I'll second.
Water Street. For the committee, I move approval.
And I will second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Jared. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next is ordinance number 2018-05-040, an ordinance amending Schedule Q of Section 23-64 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, decreasing state speed limits on certain streets, Lincoln Avenue between Nevada Street and Pennsylvania Avenue. For the committee, I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Jared. Any further discussion? Dennis?
I'm not real sure I really want to support the reduction of the speed, but I really would like to support the bumpouts, the signage that perhaps draws more attention to pedestrian crossings that were indicated in the proposal from Traffic Commission.
Bill?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of the reduction in speed limits. I think what Nick Mann was talking about, I agreed with a lot of the points he brought up, I just don't agree with the conclusion. I think part of it is that people are already driving close to thirty miles per hour, and that's pretty rare for people to actually be driving the speed limit, for one thing. So I think that's almost an indicator by itself, the speed limit might be too high. So people that are driving twenty-nine to thirty-two, eighty-five percent of the people are driving less than that, could not really change their behavior by much and probably wouldn't get a ticket. But I think the people that are driving thirty-five and higher, who might not be cutting tickets now, will have to slow down. And if the other people that are respecting the speed limit now start respecting a little bit more a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit, then everybody will have to slow down. I think the object is to get people to slow down a little bit there. The five mile per hour reduction in that five-block length, and Annie checked my math on this, so it's eight and a half seconds is what you lose, assuming you catch both light screen. So I think that eight and a half seconds is something that people should be willing to give up if they want to reduce their speed by five miles per hour, and definitely the people that are going faster, if they're going thirty-five, should be slowing down, because you have four crosswalks there, you have two bus pullouts, and I think that's one of the reasons people are already going at a fairly reasonable speed. But unless we can get those faster people to slow down a little bit more and have a more consistent speed, then we're still going to end up with pedestrians getting hit and rearing collisions from people stopping for pedestrians. That said, there's still a lot of education to do with pedestrians and, and drivers, but definitely support the lower limit.
Jared?
Let's go one question, Craig. So when I think about what's going to happen with this, I think about that notorious crosswalk, I don't, I shouldn't call it notorious, but that very effective crosswalk just north of the Engineering Library and just south of the Engineering Campus on Springfield Avenue. And are we talking about four of those kinds of stoplights being put at each one of the intersections down Lincoln throughout that section? Or is that just part of it, or one of them, or is it each one of those crosswalks?
The three primary intersections with concern are Iowa, Ohio, and Indiana. Michigan, the volume of pedestrians crossing is quite low.
Yeah.
At those three particular crosswalks, we would look at an island in the middle and bump out, at least on the east side, there's a loading zone which creates available space. As far as the exact signage that would go in, the criteria that was met would be to put in some enhanced signage, which would be similar to that crosswalk at Granger. It could be other signage, too. It might be stop here for pedestrian type signage, it could be where it's LED border signage. But the indication is that something needs to be there to alert vehicles that a pedestrian is intending to cross that street.
Sure. And that, I'm assuming aligns, I mean, it's always been curious to me that that particular street is as small as it is. I know it's not physically small, because it has bus stops and things of that nature, but it almost looks, you know, like it should have been with a turn lane in the middle or something along those lines, because it is such a vital corridor. I, I use it to avoid going up Vine Street all the time, because there's so many stop signs and stoplights through there, and it's easier for me to navigate student traffic. I'm just curious as to, if we predict, I mean, it is a heavily trafficked part of, part of the street, and I know that Springfield gets major backups coming, coming down there when students are passing through that area, do we have concerns about causing backups back up to, I forget what the street is where Cafe Paradiso is, and that, that intersection?
Nevada.
Nevada.
So the, the analysis that was done was a preliminary analysis. It was basically, you know, we had some concerns presented to the city, we performed a traffic analysis, and we came up with these initial recommendations. But if we were to pursue the highway safety improvement funding, there would be a, what is called a Phase One study, which would really dive into the nuts and bolts of this corridor, and then we could look at those type of things that you have concerns about. The speed limit reduction was really a part of the, all the pieces to make this corridor safer.
Gotcha.
The bumpouts and the medians are really a key component of this, but also a component of it is the reduction in the speed. Because speed reductions from five mile an hour, it takes about forty-five feet less for a vehicle to stop. That's quite a bit when we have as many pedestrians as we have crossing through there. When we did counts there, across those four intersections, within the noon hour, there was over two-hundred-and-five pedestrians and bicyclists crossing that zone, which is quite a bit. We don't have a lot of locations like that, other than really inside the campus area by the Union, that's pretty high. But outside of that zone, this is probably the highest, other than maybe downtown Urbana. But I don't think downtown Urbana even reaches the level that this, this particular location does.
Sure, I would totally, totally agree. And I mean, I seconded the motion on the ordinance, and I do support it. I was just curious how far along in that analysis we were.
Yeah.
And it's good to hear that we're just in the beginning phase of looking at it.
Yeah, we would have, you know, and part of that, Jared, is we'd also be looking at lighting levels and doing photometric analysis, because that was brought forth, too, as some concerns with, whether or not there's adequate street lighting.
True.
We would have to retain an outside service to look at that. And then, you know, I think looking at the corridor as a whole, and, you know, seeing how traffic would behave. But I think, too, the, the key point from staff is that this corridor is a little different than, you know, perhaps other locations within the city, just because of the land used to the east and the university to the west, we have just a high amount of pedestrians, and we have a high conflict zone. The Lincoln and Ohio intersection made the top five percent list within the Illinois Department of Transportation District Five intersection list. That is not really a, a good thing for us in Urbana.
Yeah, sure.
It is something that we think that can help us propel us forward to get a Highway Safety Improvement Program grant, but that five percent list is not something that we really want to be on.
Yeah, not something to be proud of. Thanks, Craig.
Okay. Dennis?
So maybe I wasn't real sure, did the University of Illinois Traffic and Pedestrian Department or also support the reduction on Lincoln?
We, we have, so there is a representative from the university that's on the, on BPAC.
Yes.
But we did not go to separately to the U of I, but we have been in dialogue or contact with U of I representatives that have also expressed concerns about this corridor.
Right.
But if you're asking, did an official body from the university provide support? The answer is, we did not seek that, nor did we get it.
Oh, so nobody endorsed it from the university?
It's, and we have not asked for that either, because the roadway is the city of Urbana jurisdiction.
Right. But it's part of the university's borders, so I thought probably they'd be wanting to put some input on it.
There has been concerns expressed by the university about the cross, the, the bike crossing, particularly at Iowa, because that connects with the, the bike route there to the east. There's also been concerns from the sororities that live to the east.
Yeah.
And then as well, the university is concerned, has expressed concern about the lighting levels.
And then, there's also a lot of crossing conflicts on North Lincoln, where buses de-park students who live in the, I can't remember the name of that complex, but it's like a five-story multi-apartment block of, what is it called?
Atrium. Are you talking about one south, one north?
Yeah, the atrium, is that it?
Yeah.
On North Lincoln.
Well, we, we do...
Are you going to do, are you going to also ask for a speed reduction there and crosswalk improvements? I mean, is, will that become kind of like this, the go-to sort of solution as we face these issues in the future?
Well, I can tell you there are some concerns in that location.
Yes, I know.
We do plan to do a study later on this year. There, we have a little bit different situation, because we have higher speeds than we do to the south. We also have, as you indicated, buses unloading, and then we have pedestrians crossing.
Right.
You know, up there, four lanes of traffic with higher speeds. I don't know what the exact solution would be, but I can tell you that staff's indication is we will be studying that this year to provide some recommendations.
Is, is the recommendation that we make about the speed reduction, can it be re-looked at in two years to see whether it's necessary once bumpouts and other things have modified the pedestrian pathways?
Sure, sure. You know, you know, council always has a prerogative to revise the speed limit. I mean, you could, council could direct staff to install this, you know, and reevaluate in a certain period of time.
Right. I remember being on the Traffic Commission and having to revise signage, for example, about speed in areas of parking and all that, a couple of times before we get it right.
Right.
All right.
Okay, are we ready to vote? Bill?
I know, part of the, part of the thing that determines the speed that people drive is the design of the road. So on North Lincoln, where it's four lanes, it would be counterproductive at this stage to put up a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit sign, because people, you can't employ enough police officers to pull everybody over. And that was a problem with the limit, I guess, that we wanted at the hospital. I still wish we could do that, but I understand the argument was that there, people are already driving over the limit there, so we're kind of at the, at where the limit naturally is for that road design. So you'd just be enforcing it all day, and, and you wouldn't be able to accomplish what you wanted to. But I think in this particular area, because people are driving at a reasonable speed, I think it would be enhancement to, you know, be effective to get people to slow down a little bit more. And I also like the fact that it is adjacent to the university district, and it feels like university, I think that bodes well for it being successful there. I did have a suggestion or, or question about signage, if it would be possible. I know the university district has the black bar at the top that says "University District", and I don't know if they have a copyright on that or what, but if we couldn't use that, if we could come up with our own, just as campus district or something, to mimic that black bar, I think that... Campus District or something, then mimic that black bar, I think that might have a subtle impact as far as letting people know that they're in the university district, at least for people that are used to driving on campus.
Those black signs are being phased out. They're actually non-compliant signs, so they're being phased out. The ones that we installed on Green and Springfield are just your standard 25 mile an hour signs. But we do, you know, we do want to install some maybe enhanced warning signs on either end of the project where we might have some freedom to do something there.
Okay. I was hoping for something more subtle, but-
And then, to your point there on University Avenue, we, staff has been in contact with the Department of Transportation, and we think that things are leaning towards a 30 mile an hour speed limit through, on University Avenue. We're waiting their formal approval, but that is a growing trend within the university, within the city to basically lower speeds and, you know, declare that we need to maybe slow a little bit to give pedestrians a chance to, you know, cross roads safely.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
I may say okay.
That counts as yes. That motion passes.
Last from the committee is ordinance number 2018-05-041, an ordinance approving an assignment of a power purchase agreement from WCP Solar Services LLC to WCP Financials LLC. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Bill. Reports of special committees? There is none. Reports of officers? There is none.
I have one. Just briefly.
Okay.
All right, just a brief mention that tomorrow, the Line I-4000 cycling group, it's not a racing group, it's a cycling group. They've, some of them have hardly ever cycled before, but they're cycling across the country to raise money for cancer. They usually raise over $100,000. They've been doing this for about 10 years. They've raised over $1 million. They will be coming through campus and stopping at Beckman Center. There'll be a public open house from 3:00 to 5:00. And the two mayors of our, of our two great cities have decided to make a proclamation to declare it Line I-4000 Day, so.
Why am I surprised?
So that'll be something to congratulate these young people for this effort to raise money. Thanks.
Thank you. New business.
All right, this first item before you is an ordinance approving a major variance for the Hollywood Drive Alley. That's in Fair Lawn Village, a low-density multifamily development just a few blocks south of here. So I'm not sure how many of you are aware of the inner workings of Fair Lawn Village, but there is an alley called Hollywood Alley that runs through the middle, and it accesses a couple, or a few dozen parking spaces. And in 2009, this building, this garage structure that was at this location burnt down, and two years later, a little bit less than half of it was reconstructed, which they could do as a matter of right. However, they could not construct the full building without any variances because, if I can zoom in here, these are little tiny lots that pretty much the garage fills up the entire lot. So they would need variances, did not seek them in 2011 for that reconstruction, but would like to complete the reconstruction and therefore require variances now. The ZBA considered the matter at their May 16 meeting, and they found that the variance criteria were met, as the lots were simply too small to really be moving the garages back any farther from the alley, and also recognizing that this was the condition for decades, and no issues have been identified over the years. So they didn't see an issue with them being constructed in their former locations. So they unanimously recommended approval, and staff would concur with that recommendation.
Any questions for staff? Is there a motion?
I move approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Jared. Any further discussion?
That was Dean's second.
Oh, sorry. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
And Roberts.
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is ordinance number 2018-06-043, an ordinance approving a major variance at 408 West Green Street. ZBA case 2018 MAJ06.
So this variance request is for 408 West Green Street. That's in the MOR district, the mixed-office residential district. And that means that in order to build anything here, they did need to go in front of the MOR Development Review Board, which they did in January of 2018, and they received approval of their design. But what they decided during the final construction documents is that they would really like to put a unit in the basement. And the zoning ordinance requires units in basements to be counted against their floor-area ratio in most cases, including in this case for multifamily residential. And therefore, they would exceed their floor-area ratio maximum of .7 in order to have that basement unit. So I'm going to just show you a little bit of the drawings here. The site plan is a little bit too hard to read on the screen, so I will just let you refer to your packet on that one. But in essence, now, of course, I'm having a problem with that, so let me do it this way. In essence, the site plan from what was approved at the MOR Development Review Board is pretty much the same as what is proposed today. The only exception is that there would be a window well on the east side of the building and a walkout patio in the back. Let me find the right screen that has a really helpful. Now, the elevations, I think, you'll find helpful because you can see that the basement is totally underground, so there aren't any windows popping up. This isn't a three and a half story building. It would be a totally below grade. That's what these elevations show. And a very helpful rendering that the architect put together is what was approved at the design, or excuse me, the Development Review Board meeting on the left, and what is proposed now on the right with a note from him that says, yes, they are the same, because from the front, they are identical. So the ZBA considered this also at their May 16 meeting, and they determined that because the basement unit would not be having any impact on the mass or the scale of the building, which is the whole reason we have floor-area ratio limits to begin with, that they did think that it met the variance criteria. They didn't think that it would alter the character of the neighborhood because, as I said, it wouldn't have any impact on those elevations. And so they unanimously recommended approval of this variance as well, and staff would concur with that recommendation.
I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Dean. Any questions or discussion? Dennis?
This design is rather strikingly modern, set to place on Green Street at its location, which is fairly traditional look. Is there, was there a concern in the board review that there was a certain lack of compatibility?
The board discussion talked a little bit about how some of the elements that are in the proposed building are reflected in other buildings in the district. So what they look at is other buildings in the district. So there are a number of buildings in the district, for instance, that have flat roofs, but there are some elements on this building that do have a pitched roof, which is, of course, reflective of a lot of the gable roofs. So they did draw some parallels between some of the existing buildings. Nobody came to the Development Review Board meeting to, none of the public had any comment, with the exception of a neighbor that was just concerned about development in general next door. But there wasn't a lengthy discussion on the architectural detailing in a negative way, and I believe it got unanimous approval.
Right. I just would wish that this rather prolific architect would reconsider the value of an equally gabled roof over what seems to be just a calling card motif of ski slope roofing. In a neighborhood where all the roofs don't see ski slope, they are all evenly balanced gable roofs. Just, one would think that by looking up and down the street, you'd kind of pick up on that. But maybe this is just an idea of a stamp of originality kind of gone awry. I don't know. Just pointing it out as a person who's looking at compatibility within, I think, a rather older neighborhood on Green Street that has some new construction, which is, I would think, more compatible in general to the massing and size of a lot of the buildings around it. But nobody in the neighborhood immediately came forward to question?
No, and there was also, before that meeting, there was a neighborhood meeting at the library, and a number of residents did attend. A couple of questions, but I, it was, it's been a while, so I apologize, but I don't recall that there was any significant comment or concern in particular.
Okay. Questions, further questions or comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Okay.
That motion passes. Jared?
Due to the nature of these next ordinance and pursuant to the Illinois Liquor Control Act of 1934, I'm going to have to recuse myself from discussion of voting on the next ordinance.
So next up is liquor license ordinance number 2018-06-044, an ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing number of Class C liquor licenses for Neiman Foods Incorporated, doing business as Save-A-Lot at 220 North Broadway Avenue, Urbana, Illinois. There's actually not a net increase in liquor licenses in the city with regard to this ordinance. What we discovered as we were preparing to send out renewals for liquor licenses is that Save-A-Lot had the wrong liquor classification. So they're switching from a Class A to the proper Class C, which allows them to sell liquor, packaged liquor at retail.
I will motion that we approve this ordinance.
Second.
So it's moved by Dean, seconded by Bill. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller. Oh, I'm sorry, Roberts.
Oh, yeah. I'll say yes.
That motion passes. Okay, next up, we have a number of reappointments to boards and commissions. These are people currently serving on boards and commissions who've agreed to continue, and I'm going to read them because I think they're volunteer service. They should be recognized for their volunteer service. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, Nancy Westcott; Civilian Police Review Board, Scott Dossett; Community Development Commission, Michael Brown and Anne Heinz-Silves; Design Review Board, Scott Kunkel; Urbana Free Library Board, Michael Weissman and Jeffrey Bant; Human Relations Commission, Pete Resnick; MOR Development Review Board, Scott Kunkel; Plan Commission, Andrew Fell, Barry Ackerson; Public Arts Commission, Eric Jacobson; Sustainability Advisory Commission, Stacy Gloss, who will continue to serve as chair; Tree Commission, W.L. Jackson Byrd and Michael Stevenson; Zoning Board of Appeals, Ashley McLaughlin; Urbana Public Television Commission, Andrew Wadsworth and Carol Linsky. And again, I'd like to thank all of these residents for their continued service, devoting time and energy to these important boards and commissions. And I'll entertain a motion for the reappointments.
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointments, and I guess these are all reappointments.
Yes, they're all reappointments.
All of these reappointments.
I'll second it.
So that was moved by Jared, seconded by, was that Dean?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you had it right.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All those in favor, please?
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, Dennis.
I have felt that one of the individuals on this list, due to the position on the commission, and the position that the individual holds actively in the community, creates a conflict of interest, which I don't think is so healthy. But I'm not going to specify the individual's name, but because I have this concern, and I didn't really bring it up to talk to them about it, which I think I should have, but it just passed, I didn't realize that we were going to be doing this list until earlier today. So I'm not really prepared to make this into a big discussion, but, and I really love 90% of the people who are on this list. But because of this one particular issue I have, I'm not going to vote yes or no, I'm going to pass.
Any other comments? Is this, will all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
An aye pass.
Okay. So we have four ayes and one voting present. Motion, that motion passes. And with no further business before this body, this meeting is adjourned.